I call the 3:00 PM session of the May 24, 2022 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public later in this meeting, which is Agenda Item 16 that we'll take up this evening. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of consideration today is the Items of Consent, which is Agenda Item Number Five. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion we approve the items. So, questions ready?
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero. Jennifer, Agenda Item Number Six, A Record on Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Scott, welcome.
First of all, my friend, give me the data. This is a report as of April 29, 2022, personal property collection. We have collected 90.81% of the 2021 personal property taxes during the month. We've collected 402,000. Real estate collection, we have collected 93.51% of the 2021 real estate taxes. We've collected 269,000 during the month of April. Since 1st of January, TACS has collected 217,714 dollars. And so far, in the month of May, we've had 19 VRW stops.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Grandstaff?
I guess the ongoing question is just, you know, ways that we can get that delinquent money. I know that everybody's asking for more money, and if, I think the last week it was like five million or so.
I've got, I can give you a rundown, anything to do. If you'd like to walk about 100 feet, come by and see me one day. I don't have all the facts up here, but come by and see me. I can show you everything we're doing, everything we've got going on with TACS and other things. Just last week, we had a decree of sale hearing. We're having an auction coming up probably sometime in June, sell more real estate. But please stop by one day and see me, and I can, you know.
And I guess it is something that we as a board can do, because, you know, if everybody's asking for more money, and we've got five million that's out there, if we could get that, that would help us to better take care of our folk here in Henry County. So, if we can help push that, we'd be glad to.
I'll get in the same boat and give me more people and I collect more money. That's what, that's what I would suggest.
Well, thanks. We'll do what we have to do.
Come by and see me one day. I've got the facts and figures in my office.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Agenda Item Number Seven, Adoption of FY 2022-2023 Henry County Budget. Mr. Hall.
Staff has projected this meeting for adoption of the FY 23 budget. Numerous actions are necessary to complete the budget process, setting tax rates, adoption of budget, and appropriation of budget. The board is scheduled to set the tax rates and adopt the budget today at 3:00 PM meeting. Appropriation of the budget is scheduled for June 28, 2022. There are specific, there's specific verbiage that needs to be addressed to codify what will be presented and you have planned to adopt today, and that's within the cover sheet. So, when you get to the point of making motions, it is advisable that you read the part that's in bold, read that verbatim, so that we get the appropriate verbiage within the regulations.
Right. The board has had an opportunity to read, review that verbiage. What is the pleasure of the board?
I think one of the things that we had mentioned before was how that budget was created. And you did that without a tax increase.
Other than the meal tax.
Meal tax, right.
The meal tax is a user tax, if you will. Anyone chooses to use it by eating out, visitors to our community also help kind of carry the freight there. So, it's probably the least intrusive tax on our local citizens that we can do.
Can I ask you a question?
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the budget. I move the board adopt the following tax rates for fiscal year '23. Food and beverage meal tax increased to 6%. Real estate, .555 per 100 excess value. Personal property and machinery and tools, $1.55 per 100 of excess value of personal property, including motor vehicles, and $1.55 per 100 of excess value for machinery, tools, and business equipment. Motor vehicle license fees, cars, $20.75; motorcycles, $12; and trailers, $12.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I'm hoping this is the appropriate time, but I know that, you know, we've got these ladies and gentlemen in the back, and some questions came to me, and I just want to make sure that I put that out there. One of the questions was about, I guess, the state giving a 5% raise to officers, and then we're giving a 6%. You know, in conversation, some felt that, I guess, that wasn't clearly communicated. And just wanted to make sure I, you know, brought it up. Don't know if that's something that somebody wants to speak on. And then another concern was brought to my attention. There are two folk who work for the Sheriff's Department who will not get the 6% raise. And I know we've had some conversation, but did want to make sure that, you know, those things were brought out, you know, through conversation, and if it's something to discuss, we can discuss it, but did want to make sure I mention those.
All right. Any other discussion? Any clarification needed on the motion? Okay. All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer.
Jim, I want to make a comment now. I know it was brought to my attention that in previous conversations, we had talked about getting with the sheriff in regard to step pay. Certainly, I mean, I'd like to see how that works out, but also from the top down, from bottom up, either way, starting pay to the very top, what those salaries are, and then working, you know, with the sheriff to see if there is a equalization there.
I don't recall any requests to talk about step raises. If there had been, I missed it. We certainly meet with sheriff's office personnel. We would never refuse any of anyone regarding budget numbers. I don't call that ever being asked, at least within the last 12 to 24 months. Certainly, if there's a desire for communication and additional conversation, that's how things get done. We've never said no to anybody who's asked to meet with us. And I say us, I mean administrator staff. We never said no to anybody. So, if that's a desire of some departments, we serve that. Not sure if it can impact the next fiscal year.
I understand.
Helps right up against the deadline. But, you know, going forward, if there's a desire to have that conversation, absolutely.
Could I ask a question? And this may be Mr. Jones or Mr. Hall or Mr. Wagner. In regard to what's been done in the past versus the understanding of what will be done in the future in regard to vacancy pay, would one of you tell me what the understanding is going forward from this day?
Well, in the past, the sheriff, through conversation with our staff, has been allowed to take vacancy pay and move it around within his budget. This past year, we asked that that be delayed because our money is so tight. If you recall, we started off this process in the whole 13 million dollars, and we got balanced with only one tax increase, as Ms. Buchanan has addressed. So, that's kind of been an agreement between that department and staff. We asked this year, would that not be the case? It's because we didn't know we're 13 million dollars, we won't come back.
Mr. Jones, could you provide to the board at some point in the future, not today, as to where vacancy pay ended up for the last couple of years?
They have to come from the sheriff's office a couple. They make, they send that over, pay over, and they move that on their own, turn over savings and vacancy savings.
Okay.
That vacancy saving is one time, it's not carried. This person wasn't here for a month, so we got this much freedom. Turnover is savings. If someone may have been here for many years with a higher level of pay, may have retired, and that freed up some money, which then would be reallocated possibly to other staff and other positions within the department to, you know, for raises. So, you've got actually two types of vacancies. Short time, one-time items. Turnover is more revolving thing that goes on from year to year.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have a couple of the motions that we need to take care of within this agenda item.
Mr. Adams, may I say, I do think there was discussion about a salary study. Is that what you're speaking of? There was a?
I can attest that.
Okay.
Work is ongoing on that. We need partners for that, primarily the school system, through our purchasing department and through Mr. I and HR. Whenever it's, we think it's beneficial. Whenever we can identify another locality in the Commonwealth that has that contract out, we're about to quote-unquote "piggyback" on that contract. We finally found one, I think it was right in Henry County, City of Harrisburg. As it's been related to us, this is not correct, but in second hand, some members of the school board prefer to start all over, not piggyback someone else's RFP, but to create our money. So, if that's ultimately what the school board wants to do, we have not heard that officially, just in a holling kind of discussion. If that is what they choose to do, then we will start all over with our own RFP. Clearly, if you can piggyback, it comes, the information, the progress is seeming quicker. But if, you know, a major partner wants to do a full-blown, start-all-over RFP, then that's what we'll do, then we'll just take them.
Is there a cost?
Oh, yeah, there's a cost. We're speculating, and this is just a wild guess, but we're speculating between $200,000 and $300,000 to do a full-blown salary study for capital decisions.
And since that's not in the budget, so we'll have to pull that
No, that's right.
From elsewhere.
We try not to put things in the budget unless we know we're going to spend them. And that's a significant number. So, we do not put that in the budget.
And I guess for the folk, that that affects, do we have some kind of timeline as to when we want that to take place, so that, because the longer we wait, the longer it takes for their salaries, if there's going to be an increase for that to happen?
Well, it all depends on whether you can piggyback, which shortens the window, or if you have to start all over, which length things go. So, once that decision's made, then we can have a better idea of what that timeframe really is.
Okay. If you'll scroll down into your working papers, we have the school budget and total budget listed separately for approval, and the appropriate motions are highlighted there if you so desire. What's the pleasure of the board in regard to these motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adopt the proposed budget for school expenditures for fiscal year '23 by category as summarized in Exhibits A and B, subject to the state, federal, and local funds becoming available as estimated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. And then likewise, there is another motion highlighted that is part of the Code of Virginia that if someone so desires to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adopt the proposed fiscal year '23 budget for fiscal planning purposes as summarized in Exhibits A and B.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Eight, Financial Matters, 8A, An Additional Appropriation and Award of Contract Referencing Replacement Vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve additional appropriations of $26,797 from state asset forfeiture funds and $65,212 on insurance proceeds. Sheriff plans to use the funds to make repairs to two law enforcement vehicles and to purchase two replacement vehicles. In addition, Sheriff Perry asks the board to award a contract in the amount of $78,518 to RK Chevrolet in Virginia Beach for two police rated 2022 Chevrolet Tannos. And this pricing is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Program and the specifications.
In regard to this appropriation and award of contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appropriate the funds of $26,797 and $65,212 and award a contract to RK Chevrolet in the amount of $78,518 for the purchase of the two vehicles.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. 8B, An Additional Appropriation, Referencing Bulletproof Vest Program for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry asks the board to appropriate a grant in the amount of $47,920 from the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program. Funds in the operating budget will be used for the required 50% local match. The grant will provide protective vests for law enforcement personnel.
What's the pleasure of the board in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, wait, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appropriate $47,920 received from the Justice Department for the purchase of bulletproof vests.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. 8C, An Additional Appropriation, Referencing Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Hall.
Commonwealth's Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $2,000 from the state asset forfeiture funds to cover the cost of travel expenses.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $2,000 for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for travel expenses.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. 8D, An Award of Contract Referencing Architectural and Engineering Services for the Fielddale Heritage Project. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $130,137 to Spectrum Design and Home for Architectural and Engineering Services for the interior renovation of the Fielddale Recreation Center. The work on the rec center has been labeled as part of the Fielddale Heritage Project, which is part of the funding from the Appalachian Regional Commission. The contract should be made contingent upon approval by that Appalachian Regional Commission.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe this is in your district, if there's a motion that you so desire to make or comment?
You know, they're definitely working on this. And every time, you know, I go in there or by there, I see something new that's being done. So, it's a worthwhile project, for sure. I move that we award the contract in the amount of $130,137 to Spectrum Design for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Fielddale Heritage Project, and that would be contingent upon the approval by the Appalachian Regional Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. 8E, An Additional Appropriation, Referencing Transfer of FY '22 Funds for Capital Improvement Items. Mr. Hall.
During the recent budget presentation, staff recommended using current-year funds of $804,000 to purchase several needed capital items, including the following. Modernization of HVAC controls for the admin building, the Department of Social Services in the courthouse, lawnmower for building and grounds, a vehicle for building and grounds, a vehicle, these are all both replacement vehicles, vehicle for planning, zoning, and inspections department, mitigation of the old jail facility, Phase One, computer network switch for information services, services, and a public safety radio system replacement upgrade for IS, I mean, for public safety, is $60,000. And I'm just kind of reminding you, in the budget proposed for next year, we have no capital in that budget. We hope to be able to use some ARPA money as we get through it, or freed up money by it, to proceed with some more capital. But right now, there's no capital in that budget. So, thanks to the work of our department heads to save money this year, this allows us to do some really pressing capital items on the current-year budget.
Okay. Thank you. And the key word being current year. What is the desire of the board in regard to the transfer of the current-year funds?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of transfer of the current-year funds totaling $804,000 for the purchase of capital items as outlined above.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Do you have an additional item, 8F, that's been added to the agenda since your board package went out? The accompanying paperwork is at your desk as well. 8F is an additional appropriation referencing sale of timber from Patriot Center at Beaver Creek Industrial Park. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $113,250 received from the sale of timbers on the section of the Patriot Center known as the brine property. The additional fund will be used to make a slope repair within the industrial park to prevent erosion and to replant trees on the timberland.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $113,250.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Nine, Informational Items. I'll take comments from the board, beginning with Mr. Sayre.
No, sir.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes, sir. Just want to emphasize, you know, the importance of us having clear communication. And I think when things come out, it's important that, you know, we, you know, clearly communicate those things. And I know that, you know, these ladies and gentlemen are somewhat disappointed. You know, they hear that they're getting a 5% from the state, then a 6% from the county. And I think there, you know, I don't know all the communication and all that, but I think there was some disappointment there, and I think that, you know, we just have to make sure, things like that, we bullet, we highlight, so that, you know, people know exactly, you know, what's going on. And I'm not placing blame, because, you know, that's just, as a whole group, you know, we work together. And I also think that, you know, we talk a lot about our folk deserve to pay, we want them to get to pay, that, you know, those are things that we can sit down as a board and discuss, you know, what are ways that we can make those things happen? Because I think people like the pats on the back, and they like the, you know, as they say, you know, "Datta boy," but at some point, they want, you know, the action, and I think that's our responsibility, is to find ways, look at ways, and, you know, with ARPA, with collecting tax, I mean, collecting, you know, taxes is not out there, you know, finding ways to make sure we do those things, and just a challenge to us, you know, as a board. And, you know, just kind of, you know, those things, just kind of on my, my heart, because I know we say that a lot, and I think that does good, but people also want to see that action and just challenge us to sit down and have those discussions, so that we can take care of our folk, because if we don't, you know, they're paying well in Dambler, they're paying well in Franklin County, they're paying well in Roanoke and Greensboro, and, you know, if we start losing our officers and teachers and county workers, you know, then we'll be having different conversations. So, just thought that was important to say tonight.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
No, just to remind people about the Memorial Day service at Rose Lawn at 12:00 noon on Monday, May 30.
Okay. Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Now, I have that. Mr. Hall?
Yes, there's several items. Ms. Buchanan, it's on the phone in there. We'll go ahead and do it anyway. Memorial Day holiday is Monday. Our offices will be closed. There is a Memorial Day service at noon at Rose Lawn. If you have in front of you a notification, maybe it'll be on Sunday, that looks interesting. It's called "A Conversation with American Heroes in Martinville, Henry County." This is actually a movie that has been put together based on conversations with local veterans. That's going to be shown Sunday at 3:00 at the Walker Theater at P&amp;H Community College. There is an RSVP to this. It's tomorrow. Dylan is tomorrow. And there's an email and address on the copy that we bring for you to show that you how to RSVP for that. That looks interesting, so that's another opportunity. Fire and Rescue Appreciation Day is June 11th, Saturday, July 11th, at 11:00 AM, back here at the Jack Dalton Park. We would call your attention to that to say thanks to our fire and rescue folks who paid a volunteer. As you may have seen, the General Assembly is expected to be back in session on June 1st, with the expectation that they will not leave Richmond until a budget is approved. Hopefully, that will be sooner than later. Of course, all budgets have to be in place by July 1st going to effect, so we're hopeful that that, that will come to bear. And then finally, this is Rooster Walk weekend. Rooster Walk starts Thursday and goes through Sunday. I understand that they have sold probably more tickets than they've ever sold this year because of, one, a really good line of fans, and, two, it's been a while since they've been able to have a full-blown Rooster Walk. So, just bring your attention to that. We'll have a lot of visitors. Just as with the race weekend, we ask that folks be our best advocates when our visitors come through our community and show them the absolute best that we have to show them. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next agenda item, if someone will cite the items as a lab of Freedom of Information Act in Code of Virginia to go into closed meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion that board can be in closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to Parks and Recreation Board, the Henry Martinville Social Services Board, Patrick and Henry Community College Board, and the Piedmont Regional Community Services Board. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition-disposal of real estate. And 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. We'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Wagner, will you hold the board?
Senator Bryant, for the session, it's kind of public. This is perfectly exempted and identified in the motion to the session. Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard? Yes, sir.
Mr. Sayre?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a, an agreement for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approve the retail and small business marketing agreement between Henry County and the Chambers Partnership for Economic Growth in the amount of $20,000, with that appropriation to come from the general fund.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a consideration of form to the Parks and Rec Board.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Shirley Horton of the Collinsville District and Michael Minter at large for the Parks and Recreation Board for the length of three years. Expiration date is June 30th of 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Dillard, I believe that you have more for the board's consideration to the Henry Martinville Social Services Board.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that the board appoints Sarah Taylor to the Social Services Board for a term of four years, with the expiration date being May 31st, 2026.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Sayre, I believe that for the Patrick and Henry Community College Board, you have some appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move the board reappoint Dr. John McGraw and appoint Belinda Bryan, Robert Foster, and Dr. Delshana LeGrant to the Patrick Henry Community College Board for a term of four years, expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Slaughter, I believe for the Piedmont Regional Community Services Board, you have appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I'd like to, glad we reappoint Bonnie Martin and Thomas Gil Carter to a three-year term to expire June 30, 25.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, do you have any other items before we take recess prior to the evening meeting? Board members, do you have any? We'll stand in recess till our 6:00 PM meeting. I call this 6:00 PM session of the May 24, 2022 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from this afternoon. of Supervisors back to order from our recess from this afternoon. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board and be specifically placed on the agenda, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to, to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters presented by the public later in this meeting, which will be Agenda Item Number 16 tonight. Again, welcome everyone. Our first, uh, item is Agenda Item Number 11. We have with us Lisa Hughes from, uh, VDOT for General Highway Matters. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, we had a public hearing last month for a secondary six-year plan and the only changes that we recommend, we, uh, recommend flopping two of the priorities, uh, number two and three. Uh, we've got some work we need to do along 220 on Greensboro Road because that drainage system is failing and, uh, if we can, uh, put a little money into that, I think we can get that done this summer. So I would ask, um, if you all had any questions on that and, uh, I would need your approval to proceed.
Any questions? I will need a, a motion, uh, for approval of the proposed VDOT six-year secondary, uh, road plan.
Sir, move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer.
And, uh, just two very quick items. Uh, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, uh, approved the resolutions for the naming of the bridges. Six of the seven, they have approved. The seventh one was for Sergeant Felipe and that required an additional endorsement from the state, please, which we've received and that will be done in June. That'll go for the Commonwealth Transportation Board in June, so we'll have that. And, um, and we've got an upcoming bridge replacement project on Miles Road, um, just right at FC and, uh, the road will be closed from July the 11th to August 9th, but that's a pretty good detour and shouldn't be too. And that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Ms. Hughes, question for you. You know, as, as supervisor, we have complaints all the time about people calling and about people's yards, grass and stuff needing to be mowed. And so we tell them what we'll do is to try to get around to get it to do. And the thing that comes back to me is, well, how can you tell me to mow my grass when the grass alongside the road is about two foot tall? What, what's the deal on the highways why the grass has not been mowed alongside the roads and stuff like that?
We've probably got another week, a week and a half on the primary roads. If, you know, we bypassed, we've done 220, working on 58 till it rained and we'll move into Bassett, get those primaries. The same contractor that we have doing those roads are also doing our secondary roads and now they work. They work from daylight to dark and, and it'll get it through pretty quick if we continue to have good weather, but, um...
Yeah, and I, I just have a hard time understanding why it takes grass to be two and a half foot tall along all the secondary roads, you know?
It, uh, actually, we started May the 9th and it didn't look like it needed mowing at that time, but since then, you know, we've had the heat and rain and it, it just shoots up. You know, your complaint, uh, you know, I hear you. Next year, we're, we're thinking about doing something a little bit different. It's just advertising different, not, not advertising it all to be done at one time. That way we can be working in different parts of the county at the same time. So maybe that we can get a little ahead of it a little better next time.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I hate to be like a stuck record, you know, but you come down Kings Mountain Road and the grass is what, two, over two foot down Kings Mountain Road? You know, I mean, this is the prime spot of Henry County and people coming through Henry County, you know, says, what do they do here, you know? So...
I understand. I understand. Thank you. We're working on it.
Let me ask one question, Lisa. On those signs, does the seventh one have to be approved before the other six go up?
Uh, no, ma'am. You can do that, um, and, and we've talked and anytime you all want to, to do that, we'll, we'll read it. We have the signs.
All right. But then do you have to get county's approval in order to put those up?
No, you just, you all let me know, um, some do it differently. They may, if you want to have a ceremony or not.
Gotcha.
If you'd like to us to put them up, we'll go ahead and put them up, unveil them. Uh, multitude of different ways you, you can do that. All I need to know is...
We just need to coordinate it.
Mm-hmm. Hey, like us to proceed.
Thank you.
Other items? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12, we have a public hearing on a rezoning application, R dash 22 dash 05, Patrick Zane Kaiser and LeAnn M. Kaiser. We have with us tonight, uh, our Director of Planning, zoning, Mr. Clark, who will give us the background on this.
Okay, this property is located in 5844 Direstall Road. It's in the Ree Creek District and tax number is 183 Lot 98. The applicant here has requested the rezoning of a portion of 15-acre lot from Agricultural District A1 to Commercial District B1. The applicant wishes to operate a commercial auto body repair shop in a building already under construction on the property. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended that the rezoning request be denied. Thought I should give you a little bit of background information on this. You've got in your working papers there, uh, a photo showing what it is that has taken place on the property and also a copy of the applicant's, uh, application that was submitted to us for review back just prior to July 1 of '21 last year. In that application, you'll see that, uh, on the first page, that it was a residential structure, uh, residential storage building that we reviewed to be placed on the property. A large detached building, a 40 by 80 for personal use and listed as residential garage. On the back page of that, you'll see where we go through a plan review process. In that plan review process, you'll see that the building plan review, when we review a building like this, it was done as a personal use residential structure. Um, and then zoning approval was done the same way as a 40 by 80 detached garage for personal use. Um, you know, if, if the applicant had communicated to us at that time that his intentions were to put a commercial auto body repair garage, uh, on the property with his home, um, it never would have made it out of our office. Uh, the building permit review process would have required, uh, architectural drawings for a commercial structure to be placed there. Um, our zoning of the property being agricultural wouldn't allow for a commercial auto body repair there. So the reason why we're here today is that the applicant, um, took his building permit and, you know, I've got a copy of the building permits that are actually issued and what are given to the applicants when they walk out, walk out the door to, uh, start construction. And it's very clear on there, it's a 40 by 80 detached, detached garage for personal use, new construction, residential. And the applicant went ahead and constructed the building. Uh, I don't know, probably 70% or so, let's say, complete with the building. We have done, uh, footing inspections on the property and when it came time to start inspecting the structure, um, it didn't appear that it was going to be a personal use building. I talked to the applicant and he, uh, told me that, you know, he's in that business. He, he wants to be able to work on, paint, uh, do repair, body repairs, auto body repairs for a living there on the property. Um, also a commercial paint booth would, has been added to the structure and is in operational condition right now. Um, I, you know, the planning commission, uh, debated over this. We talked about it quite a bit. There isn't an easy way to fix this. Um, you know, those of you that are familiar with, uh, Direstall Road, Direstall Road is mostly a residential and agricultural area. It's not a commercial area. Um, the planning commission and staff, myself, think the property is correctly zoned as it is. Um, when you look at that property and compare, uh, how it's zoned now to what it would take to call that a commercial property in a commercial area, we just don't see it. And when, I'll say again, when you're asked, how can we fix this? I don't have an answer for how we can fix this. It's agricultural property. We have the opinion that it's, uh, correctly zoned as it is. The applicant walked out of the office with a building permit for a, uh, large, uh, storage building and our office has been getting some phone calls and complaints already in regards to both the existence of the structure and from the, the smell of fumes that have made it over to some nearby neighbors that have called us and wanted to know what was going on. So, you know, that being enough said for the background, I wanted you to have a clear understanding of how we got here today and why the planning commission and staff recommend denial of this request.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:11. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this rezoning plan?
Yes.
Uh, please raise your hand first and I have a brief statement. Uh, anyone else? Uh, this is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you'll, uh, agree that you exhibit respect to the board, the staff, and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep, uh, your presentation no more than three minutes. Uh, yes, sir?
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Neighbor Coy Frith. I live close by. I have cattle in an adjacent pasture to the property. Just want to say that one of my cows got out a couple of months ago. His wife came to my house at 9:00 at night to tell me that one of my cows was in the road. It was pitch black, dark light, no moonlight. A black cow could be disastrous. That's the kind of neighbor I want. His building is back away from the road. It's not highly visible. It is behind the house. There are woods in front, partially, partially of it. I see no reason other than maybe somebody has complained that he couldn't run a body shop. Good neighbors? So I gotta say, I'm for it. Thank you.
Anyone else desiring to speak for or against on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at, uh, 6:13. Mr. Slaughter, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As a matter of fact, it's just a few miles from my house and I, most of the time when I go to Roanoke, I go across that way. And I had witnessed the building of this building all along and, and it's nothing unusual for a pole barn, for a hay barn. But when I noticed it looked like what I thought was a paint booth stuck out of the end of it, I called Mr. Clark and I said, you know, I, I, I don't know what's going on over there, but, um, I, it looks like a paint booth to me. And that's when things started going. The area is all farm and residential. There's no commercial businesses anywhere around it. I have likewise heard from some of the neighbors that said the fumes, they've already smelt fumes and, and it bothers them. And I, I, I don't know what the mix-up was with the gentleman as far as applying for it, but I've looked at all the paperwork that Mr. Clark said he submitted as far as getting it, the permits and stuff to build it, which I let him do to start with because it was everything classified as residential. Uh, but now, and knowing how these body shops accumulate salvage stuff around because they're always taking two cars and making one and then the remainder stuff is left, uh, I, I don't, I'm, I'm like Mr. Clark, I don't know what the answer is, what, but, but I don't think it needs to be run as a commercial body shop in that area. So I'd have to agree with, with the commission in denying it.
Is that in a form of a motion?
Uh, that...
Okay?
Yes.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any clarification?
Two questions. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
The applicant is here. Okay. All right. Um, Mr., uh, let me ask you, were, were there any, did he come to you with any proffers or anything? Did he request any proffers for this at all?
No, we really didn't discuss proffers.
Okay. Because I know when you, when you called, when, when he called me, um, he suggested he might get with you in order to, to offer some proffers in order to see if that would work. And so he has not done that, right? Okay.
I haven't, I haven't talked to you since then. I, I thought you, we was gonna talk about it today.
No, no, I suggested that you contact Mr. Clark and offer any proffers that you might have in order to see if that would work.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't undo that. But the only thing that I'm saying is, you know, like I say, it's owned for agriculture or whatever. Where I moved it is was a mountain. I mean, we moved a mountain dirt to put this building there. And it was useless for agriculture, so I don't understand all of that. But when I first started, it said it was for private use. That's exactly what I'm doing. Well, I'm using it for myself. I didn't understand that private use was for my, it only my being. That was my mistake. I own it doing 100%. But is there any way that we can make this work for me and my family? That's why I need this to work, so that I can make a living.
You know, when I talked with you, I suggested several things that you do and one of those was to talk to Mr. Clark about offering some proffers to see if that would work. And I, and I, I think I reiterated that that needed to be done prior to the, uh, meeting tonight.
Okay. I didn't understand that part. I'm sorry. I have the picture that you asked for on my phone if you want it. I have it developed, set on my stove and I had to go get my daughter today and I was running out of time, so I was running late and I forgot my picture, but I have it on my phone if you would like to see.
No, that... I, I think that was all part of what we talked about in, in getting it to Mr. Clark.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Question I would have would be some, more so for Mr. Clark. Do we have similar businesses in similar locations in other parts of the county? And I guess the other part of that would be if it's denied tonight, what does Mr. Kaiser need to do to continue that conversation or is that a dead deal?
Okay. Zoning has been in effect in Henry County for about 32 years now. Um, there are some businesses out there that have been in existence for more than 30 years now. Some of those businesses have changed hands and are being operated by new owners, their grandfather. They're allowed to continue operating as, under that grandfather's status forever as long as the use continues similar to the way it was then. Ownership doesn't change a grandfather's status, so when, if it changes hands and continues use, uh, then that's perfectly okay. That's what grandfather's status is. Are there some of those around? Yes. Um, are there people that do things in their backyards, uh, and as favors for folks and or for compensation? I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that there aren't people in the county that do that. Are there any that have been, uh, acquired building permits and built buildings behind their homes? home and gotten permission to do commercial auto body repair now? There aren't. As far as from a legal standpoint, when someone finishes a rezoning process, their only recourse then would be to appeal your decision to court. It is possible to reapply at some point in the future, but you cannot reapply within six months of being denied. When an applicant is denied, if they continue to use the property in a commercial manner, I'd have to make that stop. So, does that answer your question?
It does, and I guess the other thing, is it because he didn't go through the right process or was it hazardous? Which of those would be the reason that it would be denied?
No, the reason why it was denied is far as land use and zoning is concerned, the purpose of zoning is to separate uses that don't, that shouldn't be right next to each other. You know, you can take drastic examples and think about residences next to a chemical plant. Should that happen? No. Should you separate those uses and keep similar uses together? That's the purpose of zoning. So, it's a land use issue and whether it fits within that community more so than anything else. Just like if you were looking at putting many other type of commercial uses on that property, that probably wouldn't fit either in the middle of a very rural agricultural and residential area. If this use were being proposed in Collinsville, in one of the commercial areas where there are already plenty of body shops, already plenty of auto repair garages, those properties are zoned properly for this to take place there. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or clarification needed? The motion is to deny the application. All those in favor of denying the application, raise your hand. It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item thirteen, we have a public hearing for a rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash oh-six. Diana K. Brooks, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located at fifty-one Red Poll Hollow Drive in the Blackberry District. Tax rate number is fourteen-six lot three thirty-five. The applicant here has requested rezoning approximately an acre and a half from suburban residential district to agricultural district A1, and the applicant wishes to build an accessory building that exceeds the square footage limitations in suburban residential. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at six twenty-four. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-four. This is in my district. I agree with the planning commission that this rezoning request should be approved if someone makes a motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the rezoning request be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number fourteen, public hearing, rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash oh-seven. David O. Reynolds, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located just west of seventeen-twenty-five Daniel Road, which is the address of the Axon Post Office in the Iriswood District. Tax rate number is fifty-five-three lot sixty-nine. The applicant here has requested the rezoning of just over three tenths of an acre from commercial district B1 to rural residential district RR. The applicant wishes to market the lot for sale as residential property. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six twenty-five. Is anyone desiring to speak for or against this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-five. Mr. Dillard, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that the zoning request be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number fifteen, public hearing, rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash oh-eight. Sarah Evans and Donce Herring, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located at eighty-seven Frith Drive in the Ridgeway District. Tax rate number is fifty-two-four lot thirty-four G. The applicant here has requested the rezoning of approximately five acres from industrial district A1 to agricultural district A1. The applicant wishes to develop the property pending approval of the required special use permit into an RV park campground. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended the rezoning request be approved, and if the rezoning is approved tonight, the hearing for the special use permit, where we'll go over the specifics of developing an RV park on the property or heard about, will be heard about the board of zoning appeals tomorrow.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at six twenty-six. Is anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-six. Mr. Zayer, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion that we approve the rezoning request.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number sixteen, matters presented by the public. Do we, by show of hands, do we have those wishing to address the board tonight on the matters presented by the public? I see, you know, four, five, six hands. I'll try to take them in an orderly fashion. The same statement on matters presented by the public is the same as applied with our rezoning application. Address the board, and we're here to listen to you. Ms. Martin, I saw your hand first. Mr. Reynolds, I saw your hand second. Ms. Martin.
My name is Mary Martin. I live in the Ridgeway District of Henry County, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of every police officer we have in Henry County, and I'm specifically looking at our resource officers. On my way here tonight, I heard of a deadly school shooting in Texas where fourteen young lives and a teacher is gone now. This is not the time to be fudging on paying your school resource officers. In my humble opinion, their job is more important than any of y'all and anybody to my left. We have to have our children protected. You have no idea what these school resource officers have to go through. You have no idea. They are greatly appreciated by me. I have children that's, I have grandchildren at every level. I've got pre-K, I've got regular school, I've got high school, middle school. I have a child of some nature in every one of these schools. I want to know they're safe. I know there was some budget issues to where the school resource officers got left out of the county money and the state money. They got the ARCA money, but they did not get the county money. Everybody says, "Well, if we do, we're going to have to raise taxes." Well, raise the taxes. I'm more than happy to have mine raised to pay a police officer, especially one staying in the school, and to protect the citizens. That's their job. I voted to raise the tax to support the school system. I vote for a tax to support the school resource officers. I bet you everybody in this room would be willing to do that. And you folks have got to do better on doing that, as well as the folks to the left over here that advise you, because these are people we cannot afford to do without. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think all of you know me, and I think a lot of you know me as being a critic of some of you. I wish that the competitive part of you in sports would come out when you're protecting our community. Played sports with our administrator here is one of the best baseball players I ever saw. Played basketball. Mr. Adams on Sunday night at Christ School, one of the best rebounders. Mr. Dillard and I rode to Amherst. We had our birthdays the same day. We had some good talks, and he's very competitive. He wants to do what's right for the schools. Reason I come, I got my assessment on my office, went up thirty-seven thousand dollars. We raised the minimums tax. I voted one percent for the schools to get money for new construction. I came here because, to start with on reverse, but on the way, I called Murray to tell her about the shooting in Texas, because it was reported two kids and that's fourteen. I've got my girlfriend here tonight. Her house broke into. No one's been found six weeks ago. Everything taken out of the house. The sheriff needs money for his deputies. I got a friend in Blackberry, his landlord stole, they had to do report the phone because they didn't have an officer to come do it, come take it. I'm building a house in Blackberry. I'm scared to death it's going to be broken into. I put cameras up. I got people watching it. And I came here because my taxes increased. If my taxes increased, I want the most of all my money, and I don't think for the last year y'all have done a good job in doing that, because reversion, we were told by every one of you, it cost too much to fight it. We couldn't stop it. I even called out the attorney because he said it was closed to the public. It wasn't. It was voted to do it behind closed doors. We didn't have input. You know, we were told by Mr. Martin over here that it was two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars to stop reversion so far, which has saved the county three to six million dollars. So, you know, I come up here as a citizen, somebody that's been involved in the school system, and I hear that the money has been taken away from the resource officers. They hadn't got their money. Everybody else has got money they hadn't got theirs. I've been in those schools for fifteen years. Those resource officers are a big part of this community, and they deserve the money as much as anybody, if not more. I'm not going to attack any of you personally. You know, Joe voted for Joe for two terms. Deborah, commend you for getting the road fixed. Commend you for getting other people's roads fixed in other districts, because people have told me you're the only one that listens. Ryan Zayer right here, I commend him because he's listened to you. I'm upset about the budget being passed, taking three men leeway money with the schools. Law court tracks in real bad shape. You've got students down there that's trying to get a scholarship, so the parents won't have to pay all the money, and they get hurt. It's ending their careers. You took three men out of leeway money. The schools need nine-hundred thousand to fix some of the things, and now that leeway money would help support these resource officers. We can't keep taking from the school every time you need money, and we got to support our sheriff. You know, I commend Mr. Wager for getting the jail fixed. We're going to make a million dollars a year if things work out. If we stop reversion, we might come in off the jail each year housing prisoners. So that, that's a smart thing, and I commend Mr. Hall right here, because he has foresight and common with crossing. That's going to be a tremendous asset to this community. It's going to be like nineteen ninety-one all over again or two thousand, when we brought back, V F brought back water. You know, you do a lot of good things for the community, but then again, you fail us when it comes time to protect all of us. And that's, I'm not going to attack you, but the reversion has been a real sore thing for me, because I don't want to have to pay for Martinsville's mistakes and their economic failures, and if we would talk more about what people in Henry County that pay the taxes and pay your salary here, you get paid for being here. If you take care of us and quit talking about supporting Martinsville, and in Sunday's paper, I read it, our local attorney says if Martinsville just keep fighting, they'll get reversion through. Why is he fighting for Martinsville? He's getting paid by my taxes. My taxes are paying all of it. You're supposed to be fighting for me. You're supposed to support me as a taxpayer. So, when you continue to say reversion's inevitable, or you keep fighting, Martinsville just keep fighting, you'll get it through, I got a problem with that. You know, I want my tax money back, because I don't think you give me my money's worth. You know, I want the best. Each one of you were elected by this community because you were thought to be the best for the job, every one of you. And I've always supported all of you until the last eight or ten months, because I got looking at what's happening with our community. We got a great community right here, but I just talked to Lisa Hughes about the ditches in Blackberry. She said they were cleaned out. The ditch was not cleaned out. Jason Jones got the grass off the pavement. They never touched the ditches. I got a brand-new house up there. Our driveway is washed out right now because the cars are stopped up, because we don't have clean it back.
Mr. Reynolds?
So, and I know I'm on my three minutes, but I hadn't been here a while, and, you know, I feel like if you can give our administrator permission to spend two-hundred thousand any way he wants to, you'll be able to spend two-hundred thousand to take care of his resource officers. Thank you.
Okay, there were numerous hands toward back, and I did not see it all. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Hatcher. I live in Ridgeway. I work for Henry County Sheriff's Office. Been there for about eight years. Currently a criminal investigator. I've also been a patrol sergeant, patrol deputy, correctional deputy. I'm on a SWAT team, DIVE team, teach a lot of stuff at the academy, pretty involved with the office. I want to talk briefly about the county's proposal to absorb the general assembly raise that applied to the deputies to offset the budget for the two-dollar-an-hour rates we got in January. I've got some packets here that kind of expound the things I want to talk about in further detail. If you're interested, I can pass them out to you. I've got two. I can email more if you need. So I've not spent a lot of time talking about, you know, numbers and specifics that are in the packet, but I do know that our pay is not competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. I don't know much about pay studies. I'm not a complicated person. I like simple solutions to things. So I looked at the pay, the starting pay for new hires and officers with experience in the surrounding jurisdictions, places where officers could drive from Henry County and work without uploading their families. I found that on average, Henry County's starting pay is twelve-hundred dollars less in those jurisdictions. I found that when you account for experienced hires, we're about thirty-eight-hundred dollars behind them, and that's before the five percent raise. If you count the five percent raise, we'll be thirty-four-hundred dollars behind those other agencies. Without experience, if we're deputies with experience, it's about a fifty-five-hundred-dollar difference. So I then asked myself, well, maybe we're just not worth the extra money, right? So I looked at our workload compared to those agencies. I looked at the CAD data for Henry County Martinsville. That's the calls for service we answer. And I found that in the last year, Henry County answered almost twice as many calls for service as Martinsville Police Department. I found that we also answered almost twice as many violent calls for service as Martinsville Police Department. And I found that we conducted more traffic stops than Martinsville Police Department, but were paid less. So I looked at the I B R data from the State Police, the incident-based reporting system where we report crimes in the county. I found that Henry County is second only to Danville PD in reported offenses for 2020, the most recent year the data is available. I found that we led the way in group A arrests, with the exception of Franklin County, who narrowly beat us out. Group A arrests are serious offenses. Those are your assaults, larcenies, narcotic violations, rapes, right? Not your DIPs, your disorderly conduct, your publics. So we made more serious arrests than even Danville PD, yet we're paid less. So I thought, maybe, you know, the board just doesn't know what our job entails, right? I left the office last year and served some more money. I took a thirty-five-thousand-dollar pay raise. I found in three months that the money didn't supplant my desire to serve my community. All right, I grew up here. My friends, my family are here. I think the deputies in the back share that sentiment, right? We're passionate about what we do. We devote a lot of free time to it and bettering ourselves professionally to provide a service to the community. Having said that, we've heard a lot of talk about school resource officers. I have a picture of Deputy Ross here. It's on the back page of that, or the second last page of that packet. You'll see Deputy Ross has some blood coming down her face. She's got lacerations to her head. Deputy Ross is a school resource officer. This incident happened a couple of weeks ago. She was trying to get mental health help for a suicidal teenage girl. And while handcuffing her, the young lady managed to slip one of her handcuffs off, and began viciously attacking the deputy, right? If you've ever been in a fight, you know it's hard to control someone's hands when they're flailing, particularly when you don't want to harm that person. She'd already attempted O.C. spray. And Deputy Ross done an admirable job of not harming the young lady. And Deputy Ross done an admirable job of not harming the young lady and subdued her, but you see the damage it took. And this is just one incident during daylight hours with people watching. But my deputies routinely respond to situations by themselves at night with no help, right? But certainly you don't have to take my word for it. So I'm just, as a thought experiment, my show of hands, how many of you have been to fight a suspect? How many of you have been hit by a suspect? How many of you have been in a high-risk chase, on foot, in a vehicle, apprehended armed felonies?
Mr. Hatcher, you need to address the board, you're addressing the audience.
My point is, sir, that I know what saving the community is worth to the deputies. I know what it's worth to me, I know the sacrifices it made. I'd just like to know what it's worth to the board, right?
Okay, who else wants to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Wayne Davis and I'm a captain in Henry County Sheriff's Office. Where I've served for the past twenty-two years. I live in Mr. Buchanan's horse pasture district. I'd like to start by saying that each and every one of these deputies is thankful for the two-dollar-an-hour raise that you gave on January first at our federal armed funds. They are sincerely, from the bottom of their heart, thankful for that raise and we appreciate the county agreeing to put that into the budget back to July one so it would benefit their VRS retiring. But since then, the General Assembly has begun talks and proposed an across-the-board salary increase for all sheriffs and deputy sheriffs in this Commonwealth. The proposed raises are four percent by the senate and, excuse me, five percent by the senate and four percent by the house with one percent bonuses. There are over eight thousand deputy sheriffs across this Commonwealth. And it wouldn't reflect well and it would be quite a shame to see the hundred-and-ninety-seven deputies from the Henry County Sheriff's Office be the only ones in this Commonwealth that didn't receive this if it's granted by the General Assembly. On October the twenty-sixth, this board supervisor made a motion and voted unanimously to conduct a pay study. As of today, no RFPs been issued, no deputies heard the results of a pay study. But there is time, the deputies have worked diligently. In fact, they've investigated one thousand three hundred and twelve crimes and after twenty-three thousand calls for service, while waiting to hear the results of this study, it's not even began yet. In addition, I'd like to say that I've emailed this board concerning salary issues on September twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-one, September twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-one, May twenty-third of twenty-twenty-two, and I have yet to receive any response in regards to those emails. So I'm not just a deputy sheriff, I'm also a constituent of your district and a citizen of Henry County. And you need to pay these people accordingly. Thank you.
First off, thank you and I will address the board respectfully. I will keep my comments brief, we'll go over just a half, but I wanted to address some things from today. This started in October last year. I brought a letter next door prior to that October twenty-sixth meeting, next door. When I handed this letter asking about raises for the officers, I was told I had nothing further to discuss and I could leave. That's how I was treated. Now, I will acknowledge the person, then come back a very short period later and apologized and said I did not deserve that treatment, but I specifically said at that time I would like to talk about anything. I called each one of you other than Mr. Dillard a week before that meeting and expressed my concerns. Then we had that meeting. Step raises were mentioned in that meeting and they were also mentioned by Dr. Martin. The pay study was voted on, but as Captain Davis has said, to people who look at this nothing other than that they've been working six months and to their knowledge it hasn't even began. I too, I am very, very thankful for the two dollars per hour. I am very thankful for the facility that you supported and built. But I want to acknowledge the two dollars an hour, I wanted to sit down and talk with someone. You hear talk and talk and talk about the compression issue. One of the young men standing back here that is an excellent, excellent officer, he's gonna be leaving us in the next couple of weeks for thousands more dollars. He's been here two full years, is an excellent employee and because we don't have some type of system, he's only making about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars more a year than starting pay. This is what I'm asking for help on. Something structured, something that when a person comes here and joins our office to serve our community, there are some points down the road if I reach that milestone, if I reach that milestone. That's all I'm asking for. Earlier was mentioned about turnover money. This is the first time we have always stayed within our budget. We, and I do want to say, we have enjoyed working with our turnover money. We basically had free reign before, we've never done anything extravagant. But a good number of the men and women here, they would not even be anywhere where they're at if we were not freely allowed to use the turnover money because we basically look at people, well, you've been here ten years, here's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar raise, well, you've been here five years, here's a couple of thousand-dollar raise. If we had not been allowed to do that, we would have a shell of an office that we now have. And I ask that we continue to use our turnover money as we see fit, as long as we're within our budget. What came into question earlier is when we had our budget hearing this time, we had two employees that we were told we couldn't give raises. One, this particular person started out in a cook position almost ten years ago at twenty-two thousand dollars. They decided to become a receptionist. About five years ago, they were moved up to twenty-eight thousand dollars. Now, there are cost of living increases along through this. A little bit before, we also took how it came about, but from years, there's been a thirty-seven-and-a-half-hour schedule. We took all of the ladies or the non-sworn staff and we put them on a forty-hour schedule, this had been from the previous years. We gave them a raise, but also this lady now starts handling inmate accounts, which is actually handling inmates' money and I gave her a fifteen-hundred-dollar raise. I was told we would not give her the raise that's coming for the other employees. Then also, one of our other non-sworn staff that's been here twenty-eight years, and if I pulled his pay sheet, it's twenty-eight years cost of living increase, cost of living increase. And there have been a few small times that there were nothing, was nothing given at all as we had economic crashes. I gave this man a bump and I also want to point out that the last time our yard was mowed out here because we can't find help for our county, he took it upon himself to go to the maintenance shed and get a lawnmower and mow our yard and it's still almost a foot tall now. This is the kind of employee that I wanted to reward and was told he would not be given the raise. And I am gonna finish up my points very quickly and I ask, I thank you. Is this budget come forward, basically the officers wanted to ask you for reconsideration. I want the public to understand there are six officers being, five sworn officers and one non-sworn person being cut for this budget. The county for years has funded eighteen positions. When we had our budget hearing, eighteen, well, the county has funded numerous locally funded positions that we're thankful for. When we had our budget hearing, eighteen were proposed to be cut out. We said we cannot operate this new facility with eighteen officers short. So then it was proposed, we would get twelve of those eighteen back. But I do want to say to the public that there are six officers, six people, five sworn and one receptionist being cut from the budget that has been serving. And the thing that, I did not ask these people to come, but when he said someone took a larceny report by phone, this is the thing, we are trying to juggle a lot of hats to serve our citizens. But this cut services. They wanted to ask that you reconsider. They are thankful for the raise, but they wanted to ask you reconsider capturing the money coming from the state. I will say they are big men and women, they can handle no, but at least acknowledge their contribution to our community and their importance. With that, because the reason that I say this, I will, and I will ask at this time, since we took this office over and it's been over sixteen years, when has this office ever let this community or this board down? We have handled murders, we've handled major incidents, our stats are the highest in the region. And we, by God's graces, handled this facility and kept this locality from losing multimillion-dollar lawsuits, holding a hundred-and-seventy-five and sometimes two-hundred-and-fifteen people in a place that was originally designed for sixty-seven. And I do want to thank every person that's standing with me, the ones that aren't. It is an awesome group of individuals that I am becoming afraid are going to be picked apart price shopping by other jurisdictions that are paying more money. We are thankful for what we get, but there are people out there that will pull these well-trained officers and we have had, our community to the point, we, by God's graces, we have not had an active shooter, we have not had protests. But anybody can come watch body camera video and see how professional these men and women handle the public and how often they face dangerous life-threatening situations and usually learn to preserve life. Anyway, finishing out, when I finish here, I'm going back next door and I'm going to send out an email reminding them that they serve the silent majority. There's a silent majority that is out there that is extremely thankful. And a couple of years ago, when the protests and the COVID was going on and this office never missed a beat, there were hundreds of people that brought food, snacks and cards over thanking them and I'm gonna remind them that they're the ones that they serve because I will say unfortunately, they were somewhat disillusioned when they came over here earlier and were sit there and watched people with their heads hung down and didn't even acknowledge their contribution or thank them. And I will thank Supervisor Dillard, but I thank you for listening to me and I thank you for our office.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, I hadn't even intended to speak tonight, honestly, I was driving by and I saw all the people walking over and I saw what's going on and I came in, but just real quickly, you know, obviously you guys cannot, you guys and Ms. Buchanan, cannot have, you know, help the fact that we have a revenue problem. I mean, obviously there are rising costs across the world, inflationary things that we've all know about. So it's created a revenue problem for everyone, including my own businesses, right? I mean, you know, things are more expensive, but you know, I have a couple of things though. Really, it comes down to priorities. In the meeting that has been referenced, you know, that was some time back, that's really what I got up and spoke about in that meeting. We understand you have a lot of people pulling a lot of different ways and everybody wants their piece of the pie. There, you know, there's only so much money in the budget. I just come back to though, that there has to be a preeminent priority on public safety. Doesn't matter about all the other stuff if you don't feel safe when you leave your house or you can't get a response to a call for law enforcement. I did a ride-along with Officer Cliff Caps, I don't know if he was back there or not. And Cliff and I, Officer Caps and I went from one side of the county to the other all day long. We spent more time flying all over the county than we did doing anything else because on that particular day, I think there were only four officers on duty for the entire county. It's too much, it's too big of an area, it's unfair, it's unsafe, quite frankly. And so to me, it really just comes down to priorities. And I know you have a lot of priorities and a lot of people want a lot of things, but this to me has to be the preeminent priority. And so a secondary part of that is you do have a revenue problem. And I would quickly tell you, it's an easy way to fix it, but because of the way that the laws are written in Virginia, you'll have to wait a little while. The real estate assessments in this county are woefully low. Ridiculously low. The difference between an appraised value and an assessed value is way too disparate, they're too far apart. And I'm a Republican, I'm not for tax raises or tax increases, but you don't have to raise the tax percentage if you right-size the assessment. So I know you guys, I don't know what kind of, that's an office and she's an elected official, but assessments are too low. If you get your house appraised or you get any piece of property you have appraised in the near future, you look at that appraisal and you take a look at what the county assesses of that. I mean, I have properties that are a couple hundred, thousand dollars difference, right? Okay, that's a lot. And I don't know if anybody's noticed, but real estate prices are up and they've been up for several years now. And I know there have been some minor reassessments, but it's mine, it's not, it's not really reflective of what the market is saying. So I don't know, again, what conversations or anything, or if any legally you guys have there, but I do see that as an easy way to fix a revenue issue without even a tax raise, is just to get our assessments rights. And then lastly, as far as the police department, I do think, and I mentioned this in the last meeting, we need to do something similar to what the state police do and have some sort of wage scale for our officers, just like I'm assuming that our teachers have and anybody else has, so they know where their future's going financially. I think that's the only fair thing to know, I know it's a difficult thing, it'll take some studying, some time, some effort, but I think from what I understand and from what I hear in the room tonight, if they see, at least see the motion and the movement that you folks are taking them seriously and I'm totally not saying that you're not, but I think just the fact that they know that there's something to hope for and that you guys are taking the steps to address that and maybe come up with something, you know, between the county administration yourselves and the sheriff's department that looks like they have a stepped wage scale, something they know where their career is going and they know they have some growth opportunities that are set and they just don't have to wait and see, oh, we get something, we don't know how much it is. It's hard to live a life and plan like that. So lastly, and I'll leave you with this, what can we do as citizens? What can we do as businessmen in this community? What can I do? I'd be happy to help. I'd be happy to get together with other like-minded folks to help do whatever we can, you know, to help our police department financially and otherwise. So thank you for what you do and I do ask you that you take this situation seriously because I believe it is serious. Thank you.
Are there others wishing to address the board, Rod? Seeing and hearing no indication of such, I'll take this to agenda item seventeen, I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
Could I address one thing?
Yes, sir.
There was some comment tonight about SROs not getting pay raises. We are completely unaware of that. As far as we know, everybody's getting raises of at least six percent or something. I don't know if we're that generated, but I talked to Daryl and to Dale, well, none of us is aware of anything like that. That's not within our purview to decide whether they get it or don't get it. Everybody, as far as we know, is getting at least a six percent raise. So I don't know where that came from, if we can help figure that out and see if that's, you know.
We do, we do have one of the upper members of the sheriff's department here. Mr. Harrison, do you know where that came from?
I do that.
Mr. Adams, before we dismiss, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I have in my mind that, we had a public hearing here not long ago for open input from the public for anyone that wanted to change or have a quest to change the budget or anything to be added or taken away from the budget per se. So we give an opportunity for anyone to come in and talk to us about the budget. And of course, the library board come by and they talked to us about it and, you know, we're gonna hopefully work out some things with the library board. My question is, just for instance, what Tim just mentioned, I was not aware of that at all. I haven't heard anything whatsoever about resource officers and I get the raise, I just haven't heard of it. Why is it that the service department, and you may ask as to this for me, Mr. Major, is why the service department wait the last minute of the next day before a board meeting to come up with this right here? Why was it brought up during the public hearing like it should have been?
That's why when we're not going to.
Okay, I understand, I understand, I understand.
That might be inappropriate.
Okay, I understand, but anyway, that's just was my concerns. Was, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison, putting you on, Major, putting you on the spot, but that's all I got. you on, Major, putting you on the spot, but, uh, that's all we got.
Other comments? Mr. Hall, was there anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I think one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Adams, uh, at our three o'clock meeting, we did talk about, um, that's like the step raises and getting that information. And I know that the administration has said that they would work toward that. Of course, uh, it's something that we need to see from the top all the way down.
And like I said, at three o'clock, we will work in concert with the school system because they're the, they're the head left here because of the personnel. And, you know, we will try to move forward as, as quickly as we can. Our purchasing agent found one, as it's been related to me, found one RFP we could piggyback. Maybe I misspoke at three o'clock and said that the school board didn't seem to want to do that. Maybe I misspoke, I don't know. But if you piggyback, it happens more quickly. If you go all over, to start all over again with an RFP, that delays it a little bit. It could be a month, it could be six months, I don't know.
And piggybacking, I would imagine we would save some money because you had mentioned two to 300,000 possibly.
I don't know, but I do know expedite the process if that can be agreed on. So, you know, I think clearly we need to expedite the process, but if partners choose another path, then that's what we will do. But I'm hopeful that it will be done sooner than later. And the, the expectation of a, of a compensation study is always that those who solicit the study are required to implement it. It doesn't do any good if it comes back and says, this is a 10% raise, this is a 12% raise, this is a reclassification. I mean, no thanks for the report, we'll start on a shelf. There's got to be a commitment, both from this body and our partner bodies, that whatever it says, we will pursue with it because otherwise it's a waste of time and it further grows what appears to be a lack of confidence in voting.
Okay, and they talked about the pay scales. So would you be able to obtain that information for us by the next meeting?
Pay scale for whom?
Uh, with the sheriff's office, because they were talking about the step raises and pay scale.
I'm not sure if they even have steps.
No, they don't. But I'm talking about the pay scale from the top all the way down.
Well, that would be a step scale.
Yes.
I would think they have steps that I've seen. There is no step, time of step increases, there are to us, there are no steps.
No, no, what, what their salaries are for the, the different positions.
What they are now.
Yes, for what, for the positions.
Well, they're all over the place based on, um, experience, based on the sheriff's ability in the past to, to give extra compensation when he's offered it.
Okay, so you might.
So there really is no, no scale for the sheriff's.
So like a sergeant in that position might make, make different amounts?
It all depends on amount of service.
I see.
All sorts of things.
Okay.
Mr. Hall, you mentioned that you're waiting on the school system. Does the school system need the same, uh, study as the sheriff's department?
Yeah, there will be one study and it will encompass, as I see it, the school positions, teachers, administrators, sheriff's office personnel, county personnel.
And has the school system requested that they want this because I was thinking.
We've had some conversations. I don't think the board's taken action, as far as I know, Mr. Diller, but we've had conversations with staff.
So I was thinking the school system did that a couple of years ago and had a.
I don't recall. We were not involved in that.
Correct, I think they did that independently.
Right.
Um, and raised.
It's part of Dr. Barton's motion that we also work with the school system because of the disparity between school and police. And then the conversation with staff, school staff, our staff, I think there's a willingness to move forward, it's just a matter of do we step here or do we step here? I don't think there's any intent not to move forward as far as I know, uh, but it's just a matter of do we do, do we piggyback or do we do something on our own? And there are merits to both, but if, if the, uh, uh, ultimate goal was to do it as quickly as possible, that's probably piggybacking another locality, which we're allowed to do under the code of Virginia, if it meets the parameters that we need to be met. Michelle Allen, second question.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? No, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I made that one again.
Second.
I never got a second.
I don't either.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? It's a 6-0. Everyone have a good evening.